For the past few sessions, we've been talking about prayer. And I don't know about you, but I've thoroughly enjoyed it. It's allowed me to focus on the topic in a way that I've never done before. I've talked about prayer at various times, but I think the way we're going about it this time is probably more, we're doing a more in-depth study than I have done, or as in, that I've taught this topic before. So it's quite, it's been quite good for me. It's allowed me to really study the topic more in greater depth. We saw last week that there are different types of prayer. And that there is supplication, there is intercession, there is giving of thanks. And there are lots of different types of prayer, meditative prayer, et cetera, et cetera. And we just barely touched on these, but today we're going to try and do a deep dive, taking in a couple of these types of prayers and seeing how, and looking at the practical application in our lives. And the one that we're going to be tackling today is the intercessory prayer. Intersessory prayer. I'm sure that many of us have heard about intercession. If we're from Africa and we're all from Africa on this platform, then you're familiar with intercessory prayer. We do that a lot. It is often the focus of much of, you know, the praying that we do in Africa, especially in prayer meetings, you know? Or that's my assumption. When I was in Ghana many years ago and attending, you know, me prayer meetings, there was a lot of intercession going on. And I wonder whether that has changed. You can tell me whether there is more emphasis now on praying for yourself, praying for your own needs than praying for other issues. You know, you obviously will open the floor at some point and you'll be able to share your experience with all of us. But intercessory prayer is primarily about praying not for yourself, but praying for other people and praying for other issues. Okay? Intersessory prayer is about praying for other issues, not your own issues. Now, I believe intercessory prayer, when we set aside meditative prayer, which I believe to be the single most important in a believer's life, because that's the kind of prayer that involves you developing a relationship with God. When you put that aside, when it comes to any form of active prayer that we do, prayer that involves opening our mouth to make a request before God. I believe that a Christian whose focus is not on themselves, but whose focus is on God, spends a lot of time engaging in intercessory prayer. And I think, Araby, it was yourself that asked this question, whether that was last, I don't remember if it was last week or the week before, but you posed the question about whether, you know, it's true when people say that if you pray for other people's issues, then God will take care of your own, whether it was true? And I think I mentioned that, you know, I haven't found anything like that in the Bible, but I feel like it's just one of those things that people say. And that sort of, it's a kind of a truism, you know, but doesn't really have a basis that at least I have found. But I think on the flip side, what we really need to look at is that it's not so much that when you engage in intercessory prayer that God is going to bless you because you prayed for other people. No, I feel that's not the right approach to it. Because when you approach things that way, it's like hand go hand come. I do, I do something for God, I scratch God's back, then he scratches my back, kind of thing. And in Christianity, that's one thing that we need to set aside. The kind of Christianity that is based on some reward system, where I do something for God and then God rewards me. I pay my tithe, then he blesses me. I do this, then he does this. It's, it's a completely wrong mindset. In the New Testament, that has no basis. What is the basis of our salvation? Did you and I do anything to deserve salvation? Did any one of you do something good in order to deserve God's blessing? How many of you did something good in order to become a Christian? Say you, you, you know, you did lots of good deeds, you helped the poor, you did this, you did that. Then God looked at you and said, oh, this guy is quite good. You know what? I'm going to let my son Jesus save his life. How many of us did that? None of us. Salvation is by grace. And what that means is that it's not based on our works. It's not based on anything that we have done. It's all down to God's favor, it's all down to God's grace. That is the essence of salvation. As a matter of fact, in Romans, when you read Romans, chapter three, chapter four, you know, or chapter five, Paul goes out of his way to make a case, a case that salvation is of faith and not of work, so that no man should boast. In other words, God doesn't want to give you a chance to be able to say to him, you know what? I wasn't that bad. In fact, I was kind of on my way to heaven anyway, and my salvation was kind of icing on the cake. God doesn't want that. Instead, what is done is the Bible says, He has concluded all of us under sin. He has decided that we are all sinners. And because we are all sinners, He can abound towards us in His grace. Salvation is therefore by grace. Now, if salvation is by grace, what makes us think, think that other aspects, the other things that are necessary for our Christianity, for our Christian lives, that somehow those other things, we can acquire them through our own works? No, everything that you're going to get from God is by grace. Grace is the founding principle of Christianity. If you set aside the grace of God, you will frustrate God. One of the main challenges that we are facing in Christianity today is that we only understand grace when it comes to that initial salvation. So when we walk up to an unbeliever to preach the gospel to them, what do we say to them? We say to them, look, it doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter what you've done, it doesn't matter whether you are a murderer, it doesn't matter whether you're a fornicator, whatever you've done doesn't matter, because God's grace is sufficient to save you. God will wash you clean and He will purify you and it would be as though you never sinned before. That's what we tell unbelievers. And it's true. The question is, after that person is now saved, what do we tell him? We tell him, if you don't do this, God will bless you. If you don't pay your tithe, God will bless you. If you don't attend church services regularly, the Lord will not bless you. If you don't do this, you don't do this, we introduce different conditions into Christianity. And you know what that does? It blocks the grace of God. Because grace and works, they're opposites for each other. When you want to come to God based on what you have done, Lord, see how I've spent, see the number of days I've spent fasting, number of days I've spent praying, number of days I've spent seeking your face. If we mention those things to God, whether we mention them, we verbalize them, or whether we just murmur in our own hearts about these things, do you know what? It means we are coming to God on the basis of our achievements, of our works. And the Bible says, if it's by works, then not by grace, because the two don't mix. So then we end up frustrating the grace of God. God wants to abound towards us in His grace, but you know what? He can't, because it's a bit like electricity flowing through the mains. If you put a cable made of wire, of metal, it will conduct that electricity. But put a piece of plastic in, it will not conduct the electricity. And you might think there's something wrong with the power supply. When actually the problem is to do with, the problem is with the material that was put in, was inserted in the mains. What am I trying to say? God's power, God's grace, God's anointing, every blessing flowing from God, it's channeled through grace. And if you want to receive God's blessing, the way you receive it is through faith. It's faith that pleases God. So you believe, you receive. That is the open channel conduit between us and God. It leads through faith and grace. In other words, not based on whatever I have done, it's based on His grace. So let me give you an example, and you will see how all of this is related to prayer. If I come before God and I say, hmm, I'm not sure about asking God about this particular problem, because you know what? My, this past few weeks, I haven't really been living like I should. I am coming to Him by works. Anytime you come to God and you feel guilty because you haven't lived up to His standards, anytime you come to God, having doubts about whether He's going to respond to you because your life is not perfect, or because of something you haven't done, do you know what you're doing? You've just come to Him on the basis of your works. What it means is that the day you feel like you've ticked all the boxes, that you've done all the good things, that day, you're going to feel confident. Whenever we come to God with doubting His goodness, whenever we come to God having questions about whether He's going to bless us, we are coming to Him by works. Because works, you know, it frustrates your faith. You don't feel confident before Him, you know what? Because you think you haven't ticked all the boxes. Because you haven't ticked all the boxes, you don't feel confident. But what if you were coming to Him just on the basis that you are His child? I haven't, I haven't lived as I should have. I know that. I also know that He has made a provision for me to confess my sins. And He says, if I confess my sins, He is faithful and just to forgive me all my sins and cleanse me of all righteousness, all unrighteousness. That provision has been made. Do you know that that provision has nothing to do with answered prayers? It's not that I need to do this in order to receive blessings from Him. It's difficult for our minds to get it. Because you know what? Even you as a father or as a mother, sometimes when your kid has been very, very naughty and they, they come back to you, you kind of, especially if they are sort of maybe they are teens or something, you expect them to know better, you kind of want them to apologize for their behavior first before they expect, you know, you expect them to apologize for their behavior. But think back and ask yourself, yes, sometimes parents can be mean, but think back and ask yourself, do you still not provide for them? Do you still provide a roof over their head? Do you still, even though they've been naughty, do you, do you not make provision for them? Because you know your responsibility as a parent, and you know that all your responsibilities, they transcend the child's behavior. They transcend the child's behavior. So you are not going to be held back by the child's naughtiness. You want that behavior to change, you want them to correct themselves, you want them to apologize and all of that. But you are big enough to rise above that, to provide for your child nonetheless. My question is, do you think God is big enough to rise about, above your weaknesses? Do you, can you credit God with the same level of compassion that you credit yourself with all that you manifest? Can you credit God with the same? Do you trust that He is as merciful as you are at least? To be able to make a provision for you, even though you haven't always lived up to the mark? The answer has got to be yes, because He's the Father of lights. He said, even you who are evil know how to give good gifts to your children. How much more your Father in heaven, from whom all fatherhood derives? If you can do good things, how much more, you're God. So that principle, which we established when we were talking about, you know, prayer being relational, it has to be always be at the back of your mind. You have a relationship with God based on the fact that you are His child. You are His child. Therefore, you have a relationship with Him and you come to Him on the basis of that relationship. If you understand this principle and if you don't abandon this principle and you take it with you into other types of prayer, you would discover that some of the practices that we are engaging in right now, they are at best barbaric. Because when it comes to intercessory prayer, some of the things that we've been doing, some of the things that I was taught to do, I attended prayer meeting after prayer meeting, and these practices were engaged in. And guess what? The basis for these practices came from the Bible. People literally opened the Bible and they quoted. And the passages that they quoted seemed like they were sound, they were right. Let me ask you a simple question. Have you read 2 Chronicles, chapter seven, verse 14? If my people were called by my name, humble themselves and pray and turn from their wicked ways, then I will heal their land. You remember, I will hear from heaven and I'll heal their land. You remember that passage? I don't know about you, but I don't know the number of times that I have heard this passage quoted. To stare at people, to praise especially for the nation when there's something wrong going on. And all my life, I thought it was correct, until I started studying the subject of prayer. New Testament prayer. And I discovered just how far that was off the mark. You see, don't forget the principle that we have already laid down. The principle is, we are coming to God, not as a judge, or not as unto a judge. We are coming to God, not as unto some stranger or some, or an insensitive friend. Remember the parables, the parable of the widow and the judge? The parable of the, of the friend at midnight? Remember that Jesus contrasted the Father with these people? These characters mentioned in the stories, in the parables. And He said, your Father is not like that. So that has to be at the back of your mind when you're engaging in the sense of prayer. Now, let's go into the Bible and let's begin to look at some passages to help us, you know, drive from this point. I'll begin to read the slides. Intercession, to intercede is to pray on someone's behalf or about something not directly connected to you. It is to appeal to God or to appeal for God's intervention in someone's affairs. To, the answer may take a while. When we pray about our needs, we can influence the outcome with our attitude. When we pray for someone else, we have no control over the outcome, because the answer often involves someone else's free will. That's an important point to remember. When you're interceding, you are praying for God to intervene in someone's affairs, and that person has a free will. And they can do whatever they want to do, and God respects their free will. That's often the reason why we have to pray repeatedly. Because essentially, the person can void our prayer with their actions, with their actions, and we must continue to pray. When we are praying for ourselves, when we are supplicating, the Bible says, make your requests known. Once you have communicated that information, it's done. With, with intercession, you are doing warfare. You are doing spiritual warfare over somebody's life. There are other forces at play. So you don't relent, you don't back down, you keep going until you see the results. And we have a passage here from Ephesians, chapter one, verses 15 to 17. Paul writes, wherefore I also, after I heard of your faith in the Lord Jesus and love unto all the saints, cease not to give thanks for you making mention of you in my prayers, that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give unto you the Spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of Him. So he says, I cease not to give thanks, making mention of you in my prayers. In another place, he says, I pray for you constantly. Paul had a revelation of what God wanted to do in the lives of the believers in Ephesus. And because he knew that, he started to pray constantly. Laboring, he didn't just present his request to God and walk away, but he prayed constantly until he would, until he had seen the fruit. It's a bit like a farmer sowing seeds, then going back and watering over and over again, until he sees the fruit. It's the same with intercession. You pray, and as I said to you before, I am still learning, I'm still trying to understand fully why it's like that. The Lord is revealing to me bit by bit, but I haven't got the full revelation yet. But what I do know is that you have to keep going back, keep going back, chipping away, until you see the results. Okay? Now, the object of repetition isn't to appeal to God. In other words, when you're repeating your prayer and intercession, you are not doing it because God is like this. He's folded his arms and it's like, ah, pray louder, pray, you know, make more noise, add fasting and prayer. No, that's not the purpose. That's not, it's not that you have to, you have to persevere to persuade God. No, God has heard you. But as I said, there's, there's free will involved, there are other factors. In fact, the book of Daniel, which we will go to later, shows some of the reasons why you must persevere in prayer, because there's spiritual warfare happening behind the scenes, and you don't relent when there's spiritual warfare. In Ephesians chapter six, we are told that we must stand, having done all to stand. In other words, it's, it's a constant attitude that is supposed to maintain. It's a spiritual warfare, therefore, I mean, spiritual warfare. Therefore, in this spiritual warfare, you don't relent, you persevere. But you are not trying, you are not persevering to persuade God. Far from that. It is because you are engaged in warfare. Well, I'll explain it further. Now, through intercession, we partner with God. Intercession is really about partnering with God, and again, I will explain soon. Therefore, instead of throwing our prayers out there, we do well to first establish what's going on and to see things from God's perspective. One of the key ingredients of intercessory prayer is understanding. When you understand what God is doing, when you, so that you are not just, oh, God help, oh, God. That is just ritualistic prayer. If you're just going to go and just be, oh, God, we break down, we break, that's, you're just repeating, it's just ritual, a ritual you're doing. Even though you are doing intercessory prayer, it doesn't mean that you throw your prayers out there mindlessly. Sometimes I engage in intercessory prayer and I pray a short prayer, the rest of the time I am discerning. I'm just discussing, God, what's going on in this issue? Why is this like this? And when I gain the understanding, I'm looking for, boom, I know exactly how I'm supposed to pray. God wants you, in intercession, God wants you to partner with Him. He wants you to gain an understanding of what's going on there, so that you and Him work together. And I'll explain why it's like that. Intersessory prayer often requires patience, continual waiting on God, because, you see, it involves other people. The result sometimes will take a while to manifest. So we already know that in intercession really involves spiritual warfare. Ephesians, in Ephesians, chapter six, Paul writes, and take the helmet of salvation and the sword of the Spirit, which is the word of God, praying always with all prayer and supplication in the Spirit, and watching thereon too, with all perseverance and supplications for all saints. You see, intercession isn't mentioned, but it says, make supplication for all saints. You're praying for other people, because intercession is a form of supplication. And then here, here it says, take up the whole armor of God, that you may be able to withstand in the evil day and having done all to stand. That's Ephesians, chapter six, verse 13. The previous one was Ephesians, chapter six, verses 17 and 18. And what I explained earlier, it requires repetition. And that the reference is Ephesians, chapter one, verses 15 to 16. Paul writes that I have not stopped thanking God for you, praying for you constantly. And I've written here, if supplication involves asking in quiet confidence, intercession requires taking the stand and being relentless. And intercession requires the knowledge of the will of God. Now, when we pray for someone or a situation, we are suggesting to the Lord, that we want to partner with Him on His work. I learnt this principle a few years ago and it really blessed me. I remember, you know, I listened to a sermon, and I remember the man of God saying, look, when you start praying for someone, especially when, let's say that you're just there, and suddenly you start thinking about somebody, you know? And then you felt led to, you just felt like, oh, I need to pray for this person, and you start praying. He said, follow it up by picking up the phone, texting, whatever, make contact with the person. Why? Because the eyes of the Lord are roaming to and fro, looking for someone that He can work with. And when you've responded like that, you are obviously somebody that the Lord can use. So don't stop at prayer, reach out to that person, and the Lord might use you mightily in that person's life. Now, I remember one testimony that he gave. He said, one day he just crossed his mind to pray for a certain brother. He had been, you know, very good friends with that brother many years back, but then for whatever reason, the brother, you know, he fell, he backslid a bit and, he backslid a bit, and then the Lord, and then he didn't want to, um, he didn't want anything to do with his brother anymore. But he thought about him that day, and then he decided to just follow this principle and just picked up the phone and rang. And when it rang, the wife picked up the phone, answered the call, and when she heard who, who was at the other end of the phone, she just hung up. And then later she called back. Or rather, when he called again, she answered, and then she said, you know what? Our lives have been so difficult in the past few years. And today I was praying, that's the wife saying, and I said, Lord, we have been so helpful to so many people for so long. Now we are in a desperate situation, and Lord, is there anyone at all that you can send to us to show us that you really care? Guess what? This brother called, and because he wasn't the one that they were expecting, that's why the wife put it down. But later, because then they saw that, look, God is real. Do you know that the Lord wants to use you to solve somebody's problems, but you haven't necessarily been attentive? Many of us, we are waiting for a booming voice from heaven to say, my daughter, now I want you to take this amount of money, it's exactly 200 Ghana cities, and then take it to this house, and then you will know that it's coming from the Lord. and then take it to this house, and then you will know that it's coming from the Lord. It doesn't always work like that. Sometimes it works in very, very simple ways. I remember many years ago, I was still a student, I didn't really have any other source of money other than my stipend, which I got from the government, and, which wasn't a lot of money. But I was praying, and then once I was praying, I suddenly, I got a burden to start praying for someone. And I started praying for that person, and as soon as the prayer ended, I thought, I have to send her money. That was the first thought that came to my mind. Now, obviously, I was not here. I was in Eastern Europe at the time. And this back then, this, we're talking about nineteen ninety-one, you know, nineteen ninety-two. You, you didn't have email, you didn't have social media, you didn't have any of this. If you wanted to write to somebody, you had to write it on a piece of paper and post it, and it used to take three months to arrive. If you were lucky, two months. And there was no guarantee that if you put something in the letter, that it would arrive, because people at the post office used to open letters. But I had no other way of sending this money, and I felt that I needed to send that money, so I did. And this money went, three months later, or in fact, much longer, got a letter back saying that, this person said they were broke, dead broke, they didn't have what to eat. Then they saw this letter, but they couldn't recognize the handwriting. And I hadn't written my name at the back. I don't remember whether that was deliberate, so as to confuse the post office people, because they see it's a foreign address, then that's when they opened it. I don't remember, but in any case, I didn't put my, my details there. So they didn't know who it was. They opened it. And at first, they just, and then they opened the whole thing, and then they saw money, and they were shocked. Then that's when they went quickly to find out who it was that had sent the money. And she said, I mean, they, they was blown away, the God. The money had been sent three months earlier for a problem that was happening now. In other words, God sent the solution ahead of the problem. This person, each time I talk to her to this day, she says she will never forget what God did. That how could something like that happen? That how could God choose to use so, you know, a poor student somewhere to come and address her need? That's how God works. You see, he got, I'm pretty certain that there was a rich man a few doors away from this person. This is the, and you know what? That could have given this money to this person. But you know what? Sometimes, the only way, one, not everybody that's going to respond to the Lord, that's one. Two, sometimes when a rich person does it, he takes, he takes the glory himself. But once a poor person does it, everybody knows this one had to be good, because how would a poor person take the little money that he has and give it to someone else unless the Lord was involved? Don't just pray. Be sensitive. Be attentive. And sometimes you're not going to get any clear indication, like I did. I was a young believer, so the Lord moved. These days, I don't wait for that kind of revelation. If I just, uh, uh, thought just crossed my mind, oh, this person probably might be in a difficulty, I respond. Don't just pray, because when you pray and you are not open, then it means God has to go and look for another person. But you are his child. If he has blessed you, I'm not saying that you are rich, because you don't have to be rich to be able to bless other people, but if God has blessed you so that you have something to eat, then there's somebody who doesn't have. Be sensitive. Be sensitive to other people's needs. I know some of you do it already. So I'm, I'm, I'm just encouraging you to carry on do, doing it. Be sensitive to other people's needs, because when you start interceding, you are literally saying, Lord, I'm here. I want to partner with you in this issue to the best of my ability, and watch the grace of God unfold in your life. So intercessory prayer really is about partnering with God. When you in, engage in intercession, you are demonstrating that you are a true son or daughter of God. Because, you see, God has different projects in the world. And many years ago, the Lord showed me something. He said, you know what? For every rich child of God, or any child of God that has a little bit of means, there are many, many, many of his children that have been eating. And sometimes, the Lord showed me, he says, sometimes I will take somebody who has needs and bring them to you so that you may meet their needs on my behalf. The Bible says, he that gives us to the poor, lend it to the Lord. And he tested me with this once, and I failed. And then he showed me that I failed. That shook me and changed my attitude forever. He said, do you know, it's, the, what the Lord showed me was that, it's like you disgraced me. I brought this person to you, I brought this person to you. What are you thinking about the person? What are you thinking about? You see, sometimes we like to do good to people who deserve it. You know, a person, or, or, you know, Obadzipah is, is a nice respectable person. So I want to be nice to that person. You have already received your reward. Some of the people God will bring to you, they don't deserve anything. They don't deserve anything. You have to rise above. You know, they talk about the different types of love in the, in the, in the Greek language, agape, filio, eros, and, and some other one. You know, and they, they talk about filio being the kind of brotherly love, the kind of love that you have for those who are affiliated with you. Anybody that is kindred, anybody that is, you know, um, that you have a connection with, it's easier to love them. That's natural love. Armed robbers, they are kind to each other if they are all in the same gang. Cult members are kind to each other within, within the same. Cult members get upset if one of their own double crosses. Why? Because they expect filio, brotherly love amongst themselves. Look at the animals. The lion will go and catch an antelope and eat it, but it doesn't expect another lion to, 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 to eat it that way. At least not within the same pride. So that's filio. But the love of God, agape, arises above that. He says, that's why Jesus said, love your enemies. He was saying, the love of God that God sheds in our, their heart, it is for those that are unlovable. It is for those that you have to block your nose to love. It's about those that are so difficult to love. That's what agape is for. When you have no family connection, no blood connection, no friendship, no feeling for, nothing, just this is just a human being, and you rise above, and then you're on top of it, the person doesn't look lovable. But you rise above all of that, and you love them. That is true love. That is agape. That is agape. God wants you to start partnering with him. Now, the way partnership has been taught, and there's nothing wrong with that. It's mainly about ministry, how we partner with the ministry, we give to the ministry, and that is good. I partner with ministry, so it's not an issue. But it's a bigger concept than that. Partnering with God is about opening your heart so that God can start using you. He can start taking you to places to meet needs where no one else would have been willing to meet those needs. Where no one else would have been willing to meet those, those needs. So I belong to different WhatsApp forums, and then very often they will post, you know, some needs there. They'll say, oh, this person's relatives died, so we are doing contribution for that, and then non-stop, you know, it's one thing we Ghanaians like to do, you know, then there are both good and, and, and not so good aspects. But it's, it's one funeral after another, and it's constant contributions for funerals. And I have nothing against supporting people. But you know what? Every now and again, it will be posted that somebody is ill and has not been able to work for like twelve, fifteen years. That the person is, has no means. He is suffering in some village somewhere. This is a classmate. Watch how many people contribute. It's, it's, it, it's mind-boggling each time. People will contribute funeral after funeral after funeral after funeral. But let someone's need predicament be put that somebody's suffering, somebody needs to pay his hospital bill. You don't get the same level of enthusiasm. There's something wrong with that. If you're a child of God, and you are in that situation, you've got to look at that situation differently. You've got to, because the funeral one, filio is enough for that. Use, I scratch your back, you scratch my back. I contribute for your funeral. When my own comes, you will also contribute. There's no reward in heaven for that one. It's filio based on brotherly love, friendly affection, but the one that somebody is suffering, he is in, uh, in dire straits, and he will never be able to pay you back. Agape. Open your heart to partner with God on real issues. That would transform people's lives, and trust me, those people would, I remember after we made some contributions for somebody like that who was in serious trouble. For, you know, he was really unwell and didn't have any money. And I remember when he had his sister, they received the money. And I don't know whether they were Christians, but when you just saw, one, the gratitude, two, the blessings they were pronouncing upon the people that gave. Don't you think that those things touch God's heart? They touch the Lord's heart. I'd like to challenge you all. I know that you are kind, you are generous people, and you are willing to give. But I want to challenge you to partner with God by opening your heart to the things that are burdensome to him. Every day, somebody is crying out to him, this person, that person, I'm in trouble, oh, I need help, oh. Constantly. Some people, it's not money that they need. They need somebody to show them love. Not so long ago, I came across somebody whose, you know, father had died tragically suddenly. And I saw, I saw, I visited them, I saw, I saw, huh. This person's life has come to a standstill, because you know what? There is no father to be their cheerleader. Do you know that everybody, that your parents are your cheerleaders? You know, when there are sports, you know, and Americans do this a lot, you know, basketball match, and then they have cheerleaders on the side, doing this and cheering the people. They're cheering the, the team, the teams on. Your parents, your loved ones, they're your cheerleaders. I remember when I was younger, you know, my, my, my uncle, you know, he passed away ma- many years ago, but he was one of my cheerleaders. He would call me Oxford, um, scholar and things like that, you know? He would say those things to encourage me to want to study. He didn't used to, he, he used to assume that I was going to do well, and then he used to, you know, he used to call me Oxford scholar and things like that. Those things, they stir up a child's imagination. Somebody believes I am worthy of Oxford. If I, if I fall short of this, even I failed already, I've got to live up to it, because that person believes in me. Parents are cheerleaders. They show the children that it's possible, and the child gets, you know, galvanized and say, yes, I can do it. You know? So I went to visit this person, and I saw, huh, this person, they are not in need of food, they are not in need of clothes, they're not, they don't need money. They need a cheerleader, because the father was the biggest cheerleader. She used to drive this person everywhere, and then he died suddenly. She dropped out of school. I mean, she didn't drop out of school, she finished exams, she didn't want to go, you know, to go and study in university anymore, because wha- what is she studying? Who is she studying it for? She lost the purpose. So, oh my God, to be, to be kind to this person, it's not money that I've got to give to her. To be kind to this person, I have to bring a little bit of that cheerleading that the father would have done. Praise her for something going for her, encourage her, make her feel like she's doing it for me. Praise God. It worked. Something got stirred up in her. She applied to university, she got in, she's starting uni this September. Having abandoned it for two and a half or three years. The ways in which, you see, we can pray endlessly for things to change, but unless God can find that man or woman willing to say, Lord, I want to partner with you in this issue. I want to put myself forward for this thing to change. That's New Testament intercession, brothers and sisters. It's in your testament if my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray. So we come before God, oh, God forgive, oh, God, we confess the sins of Ghana, we confess the religion. Then we go back home. Ghana is as it was. Ghana is getting worse. Oh, God, we confess the sins of Akufado, we confess the sins of Mohammed. Ghana is getting worse. Do you know why? Because in the New Testament, the solution doesn't lie with God anymore. In Christ, he gave us everything. The Bible says, he has concluded all men under sin. He has concluded that, look, no, none, nobody is without sin. Everybody has sinned and is worthy to be judged, but so also everyone is worthy, or rather, has qualified for justification by grace. Jesus died on the cross to, to provide salvation for every human being. Because of that, we don't need to come before God crying and begging for the forgiveness as though that was what was going to stop anything, or that's what's going to pour the blessings of God upon a nation. Jesus did all that intercession. When the Bible says, when he died, he took his blood to heaven before the throne of God to make intercession. Are you better than him? New Testament intercession is not trying to repeat what Jesus did. It's not trying to a- a- upstate Jesus. New Testament intercession is, Lord, how can I partner with you? In this thing that you are already doing, because this problem I have just seen, this situation we have in Ghana, it hasn't escaped your attention. You know about it, you've known about it. So, God, I am new to this thing. You've been here even before Ghana came into existence as a nation. And you've seen all the problems we've had with leadership all these years. What is it that I'm going to tell you that you don't know? Father, give me understanding, what's going on here? I want to partner with you. I want to see what part I can play in restoring this nation. I don't want to just pray, throw my prayers out there. Give me understanding and watch what will happen. The Lord will begin to infuse your mind with new ideas. Instead of mindless prayer, you will begin to get ideas about what you can change, what you can do specifically, or in a little way, to make the situation better. That's New Testament prayer. You are not crying to him, uh, uh, God somewhere to show mercy, to come and do some, because you know that in Christ, he has paved the way. All you want to do is what? Lord, give me understanding in this situation, and here am I. Use me in whatever way you think, you deem possible, uh, you deem necessary. And you know what? If you get a burden to pray for somebody, reach out and talk to the person. Come close. Don't just send money. Come close to the person. Don't just send money, come close to the person, get to know him, find out what's going on, what's what, what is this person's pain? Lord, what am I going to learn from this person? What's this person's pain? How can I help? That's New Testament intercession because you and I have been called to be salt and light. When we're young, and it probably still happens in Ghana with our Dumsa, but when we were young, you know, it's 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 to happen, it wasn't that. It wasn't continuous, but but frequent. So you would have. You know, power outage for maybe a couple of hours and then it would come suddenly. And occasionally it will last maybe six hours and then we were, you know, evening would arrive. And then as children, we hated it because when when there was no, you know, and when there were power outage, what did you mean? No TV. And what did that mean? Go to bed early. So we hated it. So, you know, uh, those of you here from Redwood Court, as you will remember, if when the lights came on maybe around seven, hey, you would hear a loud shout, scream in the whole area. People were happy. Why? Because they could turn on the TV now, watch us suffer that on Sundays. You watch TV before you go to sleep. But what what's my point? The the idea that the light had been turned on, it brought joy. Nobody likes darkness, except those that want to live in sin, they want to live in evil, eh 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 hide in the darkness and do evil deeds. They love darkness. But everybody loves light. The Bible says, we are the salt of the earth, we are the light of the world. We're supposed to bring joy. We are supposed to bring a smile on people's faces. We're supposed to ease people's pain. We're supposed to lighten their burdens. And how do we do that? By drawing near to people who are in need. Praying for them. But not just pray for the, you know, the way we do rituals, say, pray, oh, Lord, bless this family, amen, and then you go and sleep. That's wickedness. Because it's the kind of prayer that is non-committal, it's the kind of prayer that costs you nothing. You know, one day David. Approached a certain man, I've forgotten his name, and the man had a um, uh, what was it? Think he had a windmill, had the windmill on 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 Mount Moriah, you know, where 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 the temple was later built. He had a windmill there and and this guy said, I want to buy your, the the the, I want to make a sacrifice here, I want to buy the land. So the guy said, look, just take it. Take it. And he said, no, I will not offer to God. That which cost me nothing. It's Old Testament. I'm not offer to God that which cost me nothing. That was David, that man, honestly, he really understood something about God. Throw in your prayer there. Oh, Lord, bless this people, oh, Lord, bless them, and then you go hide in your house and then you enjoy. That's not New Testament prayer. Lord. Bring me closer to this person's problem. Let me feel what they are feeling. Lord. Give me the means, the grace to reach out to them and to help them. That is New Testament prayer. This whole thing where we lock ourselves in places and do fitter one prayer noisy, make noise, and then we go home to our own homes, and we 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 don't get involved in the solution. We only throw the problems out there to God. It's not New Testament. In New Testament, in the New Testament days, you're supposed to be part of the whole action. Your prayer is supposed to transform you. It's supposed to, it's supposed to stretch your faith. Your prayer is supposed to take you to another level whereby because of the prayers that you are making, you cannot continue to live like this anymore because your prayer is taking you somewhere else. New Testament intercession is a completely different ballgame. What we've been doing is just Old Testament prayer. No surprise that we don't get results. Not surprising that we meet together, make noise, we don't get results, just like with our supplications, we don't get results. Because the supplication, the problem was that, you know, there was, we was not built upon a relationship. And here, it's not based upon the principles that God has laid down. In the New Testament, we don't pray to God, we don't throw our prayer out there. We become part of the problem that we are praying about. Now, let's take another Old Testament example. Daniel's prayer. The book of Daniel reveals a good example of intercessory prayer. Now, when Daniel realized the captivity of Israel was dragging on, he set aside time to fast and pray. And the scripture reference is found in Daniel chapter nine. Verse one, two, verse three, it says, in the first year of diraeus, the son of Arasera, of the lineage of the Medes, who was made king over the realm of the Cardanians. In the first year of his reign, I, Daniel, stood by the, understood, sorry, by the books. The number of years specified by the word of the Lord through Jeremiah the prophet, that he would accomplish seventy years in the desolations of Jerusalem. Then I set my face toward the Lord God, to make requests by prayer and supplications with fasting, sackcloth and ashes. Now, obviously, in our day and age, you are not supposed to come to God in this way. So even though I say it's a good example of intercessory prayer, there's a reason why I think it's a good example, and I I'll talk about that. But the good example isn't. The fact that he came with sackcloth and ashes, you can pray, you can fast, but. The good example isn't here about the way, you know, he. What does sackcloth and ashes, what what do they represent? They represent. You know, where you, in the Old Testament days, that's how they came to God, almost like mourning. And with a sort of a humble disposition, that's the idea. You can come before God with a humble disposition. By the New Testament, our relationship with God has changed. Your children don't need to jump through hoops to come to you. And neither do you. You can't come to God boldly when you're making supplications, and then when you're doing intercession, you change and then you start coming to God like Daniel and the people in the Old Testament did. No, the same attitude with which you came is the same child of God. Therefore, you come confidently, boldly before God. When we make intercessory prayer, when we make intercession, we don't do it in any other way. We don't do it with, you know, oh, God, because when you start doing that, you are behaving like the widow. Pleading with the judge. Come to him boldly. Come to him as unto somebody that you have a relationship with. So that's the first point. Daniel sought God's face with prayer and fasting. Now he had read, you know, about the the Lord restoring Israel after seventy years of desolation. Now realizing that the seventy years were dragging on, because you know what, in the first year of King Cyrus, Cyrus issued a declaration, you know, asking the Jews to go back. To Jerusalem and rebuild the temple. But very few people went. And for a long time, not much was happening. Daniel was stuck in Babylon. And he. Prayed to God. He needed to understand because as far as he was concerned. He wasn't even looking at the people, at the, you know, well, he was looking at God, you said the desolations would end and, you know, you restore. So what's going on? And Daniel's theology was such that if something was dragging on, maybe the issue is to do with us. So one of the things Daniel did in his prayer, he started confessing. The sin, his sins and the sins of the nation. Now, once he was praying. An angel was sent. To provide him with an answer. And this was Angel Gabriel's response. Know therefore and understand that from the going forth of the command to restore and build Jerusalem until Messiah the prince, there shall be seventy weeks and sixty-two, there shall be seven weeks and sixty-two weeks. The streets shall be built again and the wall even in trouble sometimes. And after the sixty-two weeks, Messiah shall be cut off, but not for himself. And the people of the prince who is come shall destroy the city and the sanctuary. The end of it shall be with a flood until the end of the war, desolations are determined. Then he shall confirm a covenant with many for one week, but in the middle of the week, he shall bring an end to sacrifice and offering. And on the wing of abomination shall be one who makes desolate even until the consummation, which is determined is poured out on the desolate. Very difficult passage to understand because of all the old English. But what is this really about? Daniel was praying because he he was only thinking about the fact that Israel was still in captivity, Israel needed to go back to the promised land, have the city rebuilt, the temple rebuilt, and the Lord said, you know what, Daniel, you're thinking about. Seventy years have ended. Let's go back to the land. I've got a long term plan. And the plan that I've gone, God, it goes all the way to the Messiah, the first coming of the Messiah and beyond. So God started to roll out his plan for the entire humanity before Daniel. Note, here was a man who was praying. Over. A much smaller issue. But the Lord saw in someone, a faithful man who whom he could partner with. So do you know what he did? He started unfolding his bigger plan, revealing to him. That's how God works. You want to pray, he will partner with you, he will start revealing things to you if you have that right attitude. So. He started showing Daniel. The sixty-two weeks, they they refer to sixty-two, actually, the word week, you know, is 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 has been translated that week, but. The newer translation, some of the translation will say sixty-two sevens, because that is actually what it says, sixty-two sevens. Why? Because then the Cardan language or Hebrew language in which this was written, there was no distinction between, there's no specific word for week, or or it's just seven. So sixty-two sevens. Have been determined and the sixty-six sevens referring to what? Four hundred and thirty, there's a few there, good amount, four hundred and thirty-four, something like that. Yes. Four hundred and thirty-four years have been determined from the moment when the pronouncement was made for the people to return. To the promised land, Cyrus made that declaration. Up onto the coming of Jesus, the Messiah. God gives such precise prophecy and people have done the calculation, it 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 actually landed on the day when Jesus, you know, when they crowned, they. Jesus came to his triumphant entry into Jerusalem on the on the on the back of a donkey. It it coincides with that particular day, the calculation, when you use, you know, three sixty days a year. To the day the Lord prophesied, and that was then when the people say, hey, behold, Hosanna, your king is coming to you. So here was Daniel praying over something small, the Lord revealed his timetable for humanity. Then he went on to describe how Jerusalem would be destroyed. That happened in AD seventy. And went on to talk about what will happen in the last days with Antichrist. So the whole of history of humanity was laid there. But because God found someone he could partner with. You see, you want to throw your prayer out there and go and let God deal with it. But God is looking for somebody to partner with, saying, what shall we do with this prayer? That you just dropped there. You are going to drop this prayer and go. Don't you know that it's somebody like you that I'm going to end up using to solve this problem? So why not you? So the angel revealed that the restoration of Israel would take many years and coming stages. The return from exile, rebuilding of the city of Jerusalem, rebuilding of the temple, the return of hearts to God. He said, seventy weeks are determined for your people and for your holy city to finish the transgression, to make an end of sins, to make reconciliation for iniquity, to bring in everlasting righteousness, to seal up the vision and prophecy, and to anoint the most holy. By the way, sixty-two of those weeks. It happened with the coming of the Messiah. Then afterwards, he said, desolations are determined, which is means the period when Jerusalem will be deserted. That period. Has ended. Jerusalem is, you know, the Jews have moved back in. So we moved in nineteen forty-eight, we moved to a different stage. Now what we are waiting for is the last seven years that have been prophesied about, those are the times of the Antichrist, the last seven years, that's what's left. So sixty-two weeks. Or sixty-two sevens, four hundred and thirty-four years have come to pass. Without knowing the will of God, Daniel would have been restricted to blind repetitive prayer, blind repetition. Which is what often happens with us. We go for our prayer meetings and we fill the time with words and noise. Without any discernment, without understanding what's going on. So let's say that you want to pray for Ghana, you look at what's going on, or let's let's look at what's going on in Africa, look at what's going on in Niger. You know, in the past, we used to have kuditas all the time. Ghana has had its fair share of kuditas. You had coups in Nigeria, coups in Ghana, coups everywhere. But the Francophone countries, they used to have that many kuditas, they used to have mainly dictators there probed up by France, and they stayed there for years. Ayade Ma was there for, I don't know, forty or fifty years, and Ofe Bwain was there for thirty, forty years, I don't remember how many, but more than thirty years, you know, and so many other dictators probed out. Something is changing. Something is changing. Now, if you are at the level of, oh, let us pray, oh, God, we come against this kudita, oh, Lord. Oh, oh, God, what's happening? We don't know what's happening. No. Lord, give us understanding. What's going on? Then start studying the issue. To to our day and age is so easy to understand what's going on. It's in the past, we just had to rely on the 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 media, the 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 legacy media. Who only tell us their opinions, they don't tell us the truth. Today you can just go on YouTube. And do what? And do the research yourself, and you will find countless videos that people have done, and if you watch enough of them, you begin to piece things together, you understand. Yeah, so this is what's going on. Okay, Lord. I can sense is what's happening. Now, Lord, then you start praying, and whilst you're praying, you ask God for understanding. Lord, keep me understanding so that you can target your prayer. Because another thing about New Testament intercession is that it's got to be targeted. Even in the Old Testament. Daniel prayed in Daniel chapter nine. He fasted, you know, and he he sought the face of the Lord. Then the angel came. But you know that he prayed again in chapter ten, which was in a couple of years later, prayed again in chapter ten. This time Daniel used a different approach. So in chapter nine, he was just confessing, in fact, the whole prayer is copied and pasted, you know, it's there. Chapter ten, we don't hear anything about Daniel's prayer and what he was asking about. But this, there's something there. Since armed with the knowledge about what had happened in chapter nine. Daniel embraced a different approach. He says, in those days, I, Daniel, was mourning three, four weeks. I ate no pleasant food, no meat or wine came into my mouth, nor did I anoint myself till the three whole weeks were fulfilled. Daniel chapter ten, verses two and three. Then the angel appeared to answer, and this is what the angel said, do not fear, Daniel, for from the first day. That you set your heart to understand. And to humble yourself before your God. Your words were heard and have come because of your words. Look at what Daniel was trying to do. He set his heart to understand. Not to pray mindlessly and to make noise, oh. Because he had seen, hey, 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 all this prayer that we pray, God, then God also has his own agenda. This problem that you've just discovered yesterday that you are screaming about, he saw that problem years ago, and he has an opinion about it. Wouldn't it be better to find out what he thinks about it first? So Daniel said, you know what, that's what I'm going to do. He was humbling himself not to talk, but to listen. And the angel said, I have come to do what? To give you understanding. So. What this shows us is that the blind approach to prayer. With the supplication. Or intercession. It's no longer befitting. A believer. It's no longer befitting of a believer, or it no longer befitting. It's no longer befitting of a believer or it no longer befit a believer. Why? Because as a child of God, first of all, you come to him based on your relationship with him. He's not a stranger. Two, you know that he has an opinion about that problem, you want to find out. You come with an attitude of someone who wants to partner with God, say, God, reveal your mind to me. Lord, I want to partake of the solution, not just tell you about the problem. That's the attitude that you come with. And we'll see that in the New Testament. There are examples of New Testament prayers, but I think I'm going to round up here because I'm sensing that, you know, I've been talking long enough. So to round up. Intercessory prayer. It's prayer for other people, prayer for other people's situation, their needs, pray for your country, et cetera, et cetera, pray for a situation. That the, and the lining principle, the underpinning, the principles, underpinning this form of prayer. They are not different from the ones for supplications, the ones for praying for your own needs. Because here too, you come as a child of God. You don't come crying and weeping and begging and confessances and all of that. That doesn't impress God. It might shock you, but it doesn't, do you know why? Because his son paid the price already and he's seated at the right hand side of God, the Bab- the right hand of God. The Bible says he makes intercessions for the saints. But he has paid for the sins of every man. That takes us to something, I thought that i- it was on one of the slides, but I can't, um. Can't see it, eh, okay. I think I rearranged the slides and it went, yeah, it won't. But that takes us to something else that I have not been, that haven't mentioned. You see, the reason why people pray to God for forgiveness or they begin praying or begin prayer with what? Confession of the sins, confession of the sins of the nation, et cetera, do you know why people do that? When nine eleven happened, you know, September. Um, eleven, um. That was, um, when the twin towers, you know, were attacked by this terrorist. Do you know what Christians were doing? When everybody was crying and weeping and did you know what Christians were doing? They were going about with placards, say, this, well, this was judgment for the sins of people. And that God is judging America that if you don't repent, et cetera. Whenever some calamity happens, do you know the Christians think that that's God's judgment? I'm sure some of you are wondering, ah, is it not? I have a question for you, if God wanted to judge sins, do you think he would stop with America? Are there not enough sins in Ghana? And why would he stop with, eh, eh, with, with America, why would he not come to you? Or is your life pure enough? Look, if the Lord were to count iniquity, who would stand? Nobody. You know, in Jesus's day, this is not a new problem, in Jesus's day, when they saw somebody suffering inside their sin. When they saw a child born blind, they said, was it, was it, um, what do they call it? This child's sin or is it, um, his father, Jesus said, neither. Jesus told him, say, woe unto you, Corazon, woe unto you, Betsaida. Then, then he, he told him, he said, look, those of you that think that, 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 the, the tower that fell on people and they died. Did you think that the people upon whom the, the tower fell? That they were more wicked than this generation? He said, let me tell you something, if you don't repent, you shall likewise die. You shall likewise perish, what was he saying? He was saying, when you see calamity come upon somebody, a tower building collapsed and it killed them, terrorists attacked. Don't jump to conclusion about why that happened. Because God has concluded the whole earth to be sinful, for all have sinned. And fall short of the glory of God. But he said, and, and this what, and are freely justified by his grace. So because has concluded you, you are all guilty before him. If he is to pass judgment and be the righteous God, he will not stop with New Orleans, he will not stop with Mexico, he will not. Anywhere that calamity or some catastrophe has happened, he will not stop there. If it's based on sin, the whole earth deserves to be wiped away. One day, the earth shall pass. God's judgment is coming, true judgment is coming. But what you are seeing now is a consequence of sin, Jesus predicted that it will happen. As, as we draw towards the end. It's like the contractions of a woman in labor. They start at first, they are sporadic, one year, one day, one every hour, one every half an hour, whatever. And then they start to gradually cluster together, start, and as they cluster together, ladies that you have had children, you know. It becomes more and more painful, more and more painful, more and more painful, Jesus said, that's what's going to happen. Towards the end of the age, the calamities are going to cluster together. Pain is going to be experienced. And at the very end, when the sin has come to its conclusion. You will see more of that happen. But let's not jump to conclusion about things happening on, eh, you know, on a day to day basis in people's lives that, oh, that must be sin, that must be that, no. Jesus has paid the price. And therefore, when we are praying for people, we can be bold before God and just ask God. God, give me wisdom, what's happening in Niger, what's happening in my country, what's happening in Africa, Lord, what's the future of this nation? He showed the future to Daniel, he can show it to you. Give me understanding so I can target my prayer. New Testament intercession is very, very different from the Old Testament approach. Let's stop crying to God like he's some mean God that needs to be pleaded with. It is no right, that's like praying, like the, that like the widow besitting the judge for mercy. No. He's already in the earth doing stuff. Even without you, without your prayer, he's already doing stuff. So it's like, God, show me what you are already doing. And let me partner with you. Think we'll end here. So as is our usual practice. We'd like to hear views of everyone. You know, I've said before and I will keep hammering this because it's important that we are not passive listeners. But that we are active listeners. We listen, we think, we share. You know, learning takes different forms. Listening is only one part of it. When you start to talk, when you start to share what you know, do you know that something happens? Your own words are then heard by you. So the thing that you heard once, now when you speak it, you hear it twice. So they, they, they used to have, um, as a saying here, I'm written, they say, um. See one, do one, teach one, something like that. If you want to learn, you observe. Then you practice, then you teach someone. When you do it, when you go through this cycle, you will never forget. And I can tell you that me teaching this subject, I have learned in a way that I've never learned before. Because in the past, I used to preach, I didn't used to teach, I've never used to consider myself somebody who's capable of teaching. Right, who used to call me my teacher, I didn't see myself as a teacher, because a teacher is patient. A teacher takes a topic and breaks it down meticulously and comes back. That was not my style, I just didn't have it in me to do it, I just liked to preach. I've had to learn. Be patient and break things down and come back and say it again and again. And doing that is changing me, doing that is benefiting, is transforming my thinking. And so I encourage you to, to not be a passive listener, take the wording. The little that you've understood, feed it back to the rest of us, because in doing so, you will not just bless us. Bless yourself, go and share it with someone, say, look, I heard something last night. Share it with someone, it will do something for you whilst you are saying it. Do you know that sometimes I learn from myself? That's why I record my thoughts all the time, I, I really will tell you. When I'm driving and I just get some thoughts like that, I'll just, you know, turn the voice recorder on my phone, turn it on. And start talking the ideas and talking, sometimes I'll talk as if I'm talking to someone and I record it. Then I listen to it and I get new ideas. Because you know that there are some thoughts that come and they come and go and you, you don't even know that they've come and gone. When you record it, you can capture your own thoughts, then you can listen to them again to, to feed yourself. So the floor is open. Who will go first? Yes, who's, who, who's, um. Who bravery then go first? Abba, you ready? Your name is on top of the list.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Today, today is so bad, I don't know where to start from, my life is. Today, I, I'm telling you, it's so bad. And somehow I feel so bad, you know, listening to you, I.
Why do you feel bad?
The fact that, uh, like. You know that God is looking for people to partner with, to, to set intentions, to help people. Eh, not just praying for people, but you know, actually, because at times. The person may not even need, I mean, you might not have money. But a word of advice or just a visit or just, um, words, you know. Something that will just make the person calm down, something. But like you said, we always want to do good to people who are closer to us. And then, or to people that, you know, who reciprocate their, um, kindness, you know. But not, uh, people who, like this funeral thing you are talking about is everywhere. You know, when it comes to funeral, because people think that, okay, well, means I also get a funeral. Someone would die by all means. So I have to do this and, you know, so I, I felt so bad that maybe, um. I might be doing something, but it's not enough at all, it's not clean, I mean, there's still nuclear. So I feel, I feel, I feel so bad, feel so bad. But like, eh, eh, as we are going on, you know, we are learning and. I was just, I, after I was listening, I was just praying that God help me, help me, help me. And you, you, you mentioned something about, you know, when we are going to God. And we feel that is because we have been good, okay? And not that grace, I mean, going because we know that it is just by grace. This thing, you know, in church mostly, you know, they will tell you that, okay. Um, once you, you, you become born again and you will please sin, it means that then. You know, and you've sinned, so I mean, it's, I mean, it can be forgiven. Or those things, and then you hear, um, some preachers like Pastor Prince Joseph, they will say, one stays forever stays, it confuses people. Even me, it confuses me. So maybe you touch on that, if not today, maybe next week. And that this one stay forever stays, is it, is it true? You know, God bless you so much.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point there you mentioned and I'm glad you brought it up actually. Eh, I wa- it was, I wasn't necessarily thinking about it, but definitely something that, you know, we will take our time to dissect. Because i- it's confusing for some of us from African backgrounds where we are. We are taught, you know, essentially a mean God, or we are taught that, you know, how you can lose your salvation easily or. Or that God won't bless you because you haven't lived up to certain standards, et cetera, et cetera. So that undermines your confidence before God. You know, you are never sure of where you stand with him. You know, we, and you feel confident when you have been ticking the boxes, your tights are all on, on point and you're, 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 you're up to date with your tights. You are doing everything as you're supposed to be doing, then you feel confident. But the thing is, you are going to fail. I can guarantee you, you are going to fail in something. And when you are at something, and when you do, you're going, you're not going to feel confident. You see, so it's important for us to understand our status as children of God. Of course, that doesn't mean that we have a license to go and live as we please. Because it's not so much that when you sin, you're going to lose your salvation. You see, Joseph Prince has got a point there, but I don't like the way he, he puts it. He has got the truth, but the way he says it kind of tilts to almost the point where it's an error. And that's because the Bible never says, one saved always saved, the Bible never states that. The Bible warns us that how shall we escape if after we've received the knowledge of the truth, we continue to live like lost men? If a person who is saved lives like a lost man consistently, what? There are two possibilities, one, he was never saved, or the other possibility is that he is losing his guard. And if you lose your guard, it's not so much that you just suddenly lose your salvation because you went and sinned, you went and committed adultery or fornication, or you went and whatever. It's not so much that you went and committed a sin and then therefore you lost your salvation. Because salvation was never given to you on the basis of works. So you can't lose it through a, a, an act that you committed. Do you know how you can lose your salvation? It's pay, it, it's, it's written about in Hebrews, chapter five, eh, chapter six. What happens is you gradually let go. By sinning and living sinfully repeatedly, it's not that God doesn't want to forgive those sins. You continue until a time comes when you drift away, Hebrews is full of that, chapter two talks about it. Let's hang on to these things so that we don't drift away, chapter two, I think, where's one talks about it, but not just that. In other place, chapter five, chapter six, they talk about it. Think chapter ten also talks a little bit about it. Where through sin you become hardened. You become, remember that you were saved by grace through faith. And what is faith? It's a response of the heart to the mercy, to the grace of God. Your, God gave you an ability to respond to his grace. That ability is called faith and it comes from the heart. But you can harden your heart and you can harden your heart to the point where God's hands are like this. But you are not able to stretch your hand towards him, your heart has departed. The Bible tells us in Hebrews that if that happens to you, you cannot be renewed again. It's not possible, because to do that was to put, is to put Christ to public shame once again. So a believer can't lose his salvation because he went and committed this sin or went and committed that sin. No, that's not how it happens, there is grace available to redeem you from any sin that you've committed. But you can drift away to the point where you are no longer responsive to the grace of God. And I've seen people come close, I've seen people come close whereby you preach the word to them and the same word they used to, they used to respond to. It's almost like you're speaking gibberish, their heart can't respond to it anymore, it's a dangerous place to be. But it doesn't happen overnight. It happens through years, a long period of letting go, letting your heart go. That's why we are encouraged to stay with the Lord, to dwell in the Lord, to abide. Jesus had abiding in me. Because if anybody doesn't abide, what does not happen? He is cast away like a branch. If you don't abide, eventually, you see, it's not like a a branch stops taking nutrients. From the stem and then it drops dead overnight. Doesn't happen that way. He's there gradually, you come tomorrow, you see, he's no longer bright green. It's it's it's, you see it with tomatoes, you know, like sometimes I grow tomatoes and you see. Some uh some some leaf there, it'll come, the color is changing and then gradually before you know it is withered and it's fallen off. It has stopped taking nutrients from the stem. Likewise, if a person disconnects from the Lord. And is um sucking from the world. Repeatedly, a time will come. He loses his connection, because it is by faith we stand. If his heart is no longer able to respond in faith. That's when he falls off. And that is a deadly place to be. So, as a believer. Who loves God, who is constantly seeking, God, I want to know you, God, I want you to, how can that person lose his salvation? How can that person lose his status of a child of God? You are here listening to the word of God, you are here seeking to know God, how can you? How can God, the Bible says, he who comes to me, he will not cast away, why can't he cast you away? He doesn't cast away, even those who fall off, he doesn't cast away. Said they are cast away. They fall off. So let's hang on. And we will never fall off and as long as we are in him, we can enjoy his grace abundantly. We might, you know, take this topic maybe in greater detail, but I hope this is helpful. Okay, Abba, is that, was that, was that helpful?
Sure, yeah, very helpful, very helpful. I'm used to this, we can just.
Okay, okay.
From the phone, but I was telling you, I had to run back. Thank you so much, God bless you.
Yeah, God bless you too. Good, who wants to go next?
Good evening everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, so much has been thought here. And I have been truly blessed. I just want to touch on something, I think you said earlier, you know. Eh, and it was to do with like grace. And um I remember some years back, I was in a service, not not many. Not many services have blessed me, but the ones that. Thoughts me something, left something with me for for life and that was one of the services. The preacher may not have, I'm not sure he explained the scripture right. Or use the right scripture to explain it, but um he was talking about. How sometimes believers, we pray and we do not seem to see results. So sometimes somebody will say, oh, but I've been, maybe I've been a Christian for long. I've never, I didn't even fornicate, but I've give, I'm ma- I'm married and I'm not giving birth. I pay my tithe, I do this and even I know somebody who has eh. I can do, I had so many abortions, but the person has given birth, Lord, like, why, why do you treat me that that way? And he was saying that the very moment you begin to feel that in your heart or say it in prayer. Your prayer is sounding like the Pharisee who says eh, like, I I I do rights. I I give arms, I do that, I do that. You may not say it directly, but. You you sometimes you are thinking in your heart that, well, eh, you you deserve it better than the other person. And you said something about, you know, no matter what we do. You your righteousness, your your works cannot eh. You 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 will not be perfect in your works, because even when you feel like today, I mean. Today I've done well, oh, as for this week, I have, I have done so right with, or I'm standing right with God. There may be other things you are even supposed to do that you are not doing. And so you can never come to the point where you say your works have paid the price or your work. Gives you a sense of entitlement. So like a lot of us Christians, we. We feel entitlement looking at our own work. But it is not about our work, it is about the finished work of Christ, because it 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 is. He 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 will meet, he will meet all the requirements. No matter what, your works will not meet all the requirements. So he said, look, that person that you are seeing as. Maybe an unbeliever is not coming with the same sense of entitlement. He understands that, well, look, I am not even fitting the mark, but I know that you are good, so. Lord, do so so and so for me. And the person is getting results, but we feel that. The sense of entitlement is making us depend on our own works and not the the righteousness of of Christ. And you said some, when you said it, I, my mind went back to. The scripture where last week you used the breadcrumbs falling off. And and you know, Jesus was moved by the faith, but when I thought of the scripture again. I realized that it wasn't just faith at work, but this is example of grace. Where he knows that he's not part of the people or she's not part of the people. Like of Christ or or it's the people of God or the people that were eh Jews. But he understood that even the the. The dogs feed off the crumbs that are falling. So it's it's not even about. That, it's not about us, it is about the goodness of God. If we focus on. God and not eh and not on our works, then we are not falling from grace. And so when you said that, it really blessed me, how sometimes we we fall from grace. And and depend on our works. God bless you so much.
You too, God bless you too. And hopefully by God's grace, we will get a chance to talk a little bit more about grace versus works because. One of the things that really did it for me, my my work with God was to understand grace, you know. I I thought I understood grace until until like the Lord showed me, I just didn't understand it. And when you don't understand the grace of God, you are limited. You're not going to walk in the blessings of God as you should, you know, because you're always coming to him based on what you have done. And because you're coming to him based on what you're, that you frustrate the grace of God. When Paul wrote to the Galatians, you know what he was alarmed by? He was alarmed that the Galatians were coming to God based on works. Remember Paul had written to the Corinthians, or rather he would write to the Corinthians. And the Corinthians, eh eh the the Corinthian church was, you know, indulging in all sorts of sinful practices. Yet Paul was not as alarmed. As he was when he wrote to the Galatians, because you know what? Grace is the solution for sin. So if somebody is sinning. The solution is grace. But grace is not the solution for works. Works are an antidote to grace. Works neutralize grace. So it's not a solution, it's one is not a solution to the for the other. So when Paul saw the people were walking in in works, he said, oh my God, these guys are in trouble. He said. I am concerned that I might have. Run in vain. That labored on you guys in vain. Can you imagine? In the the church in Corinth, somebody was fornicating and Paul didn't think he had run in vain. But with the Galatians, he was alarmed. Because grace, why do you think the Israel suffered? When you open the Old Testament and you see the suffering of Israel, what do you think that was all about? They did not understand grace. God took them from the promised land, took them from Egypt. And you know what he told Moses? He said, bring them to this mountain that they may worship me. Bring them to me, bring them to me. If you go and read, you will notice in Exodus chapter nineteen, he was talking about intimacy, come. And Jesus said, he said all along, I have wanted to gather you under my wings. As a hen gathers its chicks, but you would not let me. Therefore your house is left unto you desolate. Israel suffered. You know, horrible punishments, not. Because they sinned, yes, because they sinned, but not because they sinned. Why? Because grace is the solution to sin. He wanted to have fellowship with them. Come, I will cleanse you, come, it will be okay. They turned their backs on him. They never understood the grace of God. Never walked in the grace of God. To this day. They are trying to carve their own path to the Lord when the Lord has provided grace. So not understanding grace can be so damaging to a believer. So we're going to spend some time studying grace, I don't know. When that's going to happen, but it's going to happen at some point. So we can study grace, understand the workings of grace in our lives, so that wherever. We've become legalistic. When I understood grace, I became relaxed. I became less threatening to other believers. Because trust me, when you are legalistic, you become threatened to other believers. When they see you, they start hiding. Because you are like the Pharisee. And and you're going to eh pull them up on something that they've done wrong. When I understood grace. I became, people used to come to me. To confess their sins. I used to say, what's going on? When my attitude changed, people used to come to me. My sister came to me, she said, you know what, I did something really horrible. But I can't tell anyone else, I know I can't trust you. She said, what's going on? And then she told me what she had done and I didn't condemn her and so. But this person was able to confess her sin. Because of grace. If we, if I were had the attitude of a Pharisee, she would have continued in darkness. She was able to confess her sin. Because of grace, grace is the solution. Grace is not a license to sin. That's what people think, ah, we are under grace. No, 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 no. Grace actually brings sin from darkness and brings it into the light and say, we cleanse it, we deal with it. That's grace. So at the right time, we will, we'll talk about grace in detail. Who wants to go next?
Hello, I think the eh eh last thing, I mean, you you said something that. Blessed me, you know, you you you, when you gave the example of. Um, when you wrote a letter. And and I mean, it took long before the person received it, but then it's answered. A need three months later, you know, it times. We we eh, it's it's marvelous the way God works, because you know eh. When you were doing it, you you might not have heard. An audible voice from God or eh eh it might eh 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 it might have just been a feeling. And you did not ignore that feeling and. Later on, like fast forward somewhere. Eh 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 it was, it 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 went at the right time that a person needed. Eh, it tells me that the Lord knows the right time and sometimes the the things that we are worried about. Or we are, we we are frightened about, it's, God had made provision for it. Long time, just that eh we are focused on. The present and we want to, maybe we we want to see God work like eh a magician, sometimes. The things are changing, but we are focused on the old picture and we we do not see what. God, the the step by step, we we want to see like you woke up and it just disappeared. But sometimes, as long as though God is not working, there are little, God is leaving little signs for us to see that he's working. It touched my heart, what, I I I realize just how much God is good, like eh, he would think about your problem three months. Before that problem and and make sure that when it gets overwhelming for you. It's eh 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 you will not be overwhelmed, eh you will not die, he he will step in at the right time. I think we should all develop that sensitivity to to or partner with God. As Sister Ava said, like, to partner with God, because. Ah, you you know, you 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 can frustrate God with certain actions if you didn't listen to it. Perhaps she has to go another route to to beg eh for it somewhere or probably to even do something. That is not necessary for her to do, because you were not sensitive to what God wanted to use you to do. I pray that God will help us to also not accept solutions or just expect solutions. When we need it, but also be people's, or be solution to people's problems. God bless you.
Amen, 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 amen. Good. Kukua, do you want to say something? Oh, I see Frank has muted or mute eh eh or muted himself. Do you want to talk?
Yeah, Pastor Ben, eh eh you you said something that I I encountered recently and I think every believer. Though I joined lately, forgive me, every believer must be concerned about about what. A statement that you made about a lady coming to confess eh sins to you. In fact, if it were to be those days, as you said, you will condemn, but now because of the grace. We shouldn't condemn every Christian on this platform, you have the attitude of knowing that it could have happened to you. What our sister went through, what our brother might have gone to, when they confess their sins, please, we shouldn't condemn them. Last month or three weeks ago, there was a lady that I was um teaching. And I use my life as an example. I went to the state of telling them that this was how I led my life, I never dated anybody before I completed university. There's this, apart from my wife, I know no other woman sexually. The lady was like watching me like this. So it took her a long time that she came to me. That she has something to say, I shouldn't tell the parent, I shouldn't tell the auntie, I said, why? Anytime you push scripture to this girl, this girl just rejects it, just like that. You push scripture, she rejects the scripture. She said, no, no, she doesn't want to do anything, because she has not been going to church for so long. Every Sunday she's sick in the morning, she pretends to be sick and because of that, every Sunday she's sick. You give her, I forwarded to her prayer ring, she said, I'm wasting my data because she's not going to open it. She said everything, but this girl, I kept on pressing, reading the scripture, she does want to listen. Then later, I forwarded it this into her, then when she opened her mouth to talk. In fact, it was serious. Her own teacher, GHS, introduced her to porn, pornography and took her through um oral sex. And it has gone to the extent that this girl has been watching and now she doesn't even like eh. To see even part of male and eh female opposite side doing it. Now she enjoys female to female. That's what she likes watching. That's going to the extent that she even want to commit suicide, because where their mind is, but. I didn't condemn, as you said. So we should come to the point of letting the person understand. The moment you condemn, the person, you have lost the soul. So as Pastor Ben is saying, please, let's be conscious of this. Everybody, there's none righteous, you are not righteous, so if anybody should come before you to confess something to you, please. Let's be very, very careful not to condemn, but let's bring the person closer and I thank God. The person accepted Christ and has changed. I encourage her to join the SU on campus, be praying and other things. So God bless you so much. So the key is condemnation should be a ten over the past as Christians. Thank you.
Amen, amen, thank you for that, that's wonderful. It's eh grace is the solution. There's no sin out there that Jesus didn't die for. And there's no story that is it's that is so bad that God's, Jesus, God's grace can't deal with. No matter what anybody has done, in the grace of God is sufficient. And we ourselves should be partakers of the grace, so that it will be easier for us to also give, because sometimes you can't give what you don't have. But if we have been partakers of the grace of God, have enjoyed it, and then when we ourselves have been left off the hook. Then it's easier to then also let other people experience the grace, amen. Um, Chrissia, I I derive, I don't know if you want to say something before we close.
Yeah, good evening, um, thank you for another interesting session, um. God bless you for your effort and to everyone on the platform. Yeah, like my sister said, eh, it's loaded. I, I just want to add something to what you taught, and, um, I mean, being around for a few years and from where I'm coming from, I believe it will resonate with most of us on the platform. I, I have come to, I came to the understanding that most of us from the African background do not know or understand the nature of God, the character of God, who God is. So it even reflects in the way we pray. I, I enjoyed it when you used analogy of people thinking that what happened to the US, you know, was judgment from God. Now, if you take time to study the scriptures, in Romans chapter five, where it's eight to ten, the Bible says that there was a time we were all enemies of God. So if God is going around killing people, none of us are supposed to be on the platform, because till we got born again, we were God's enemies. But if he showed mercy and we found grace, or grace found us, rather, why do we think that other people do not need it? Eh, you know, eh, one, one time I was looking at, I came across some prayer that some people were praying, and, and my heart was bleeding in the sense that because of the way we see God, it even reflects in our prayer. Eh, if you look at the book of Acts, chapter nine, when Paul was going about harassing the church, if it were to be today's believers, especially in Ghana, they will have prayed that God should kill him. But if you look at Acts nine fifteen, Paul told Ananias, "He is a chosen servant." I mean, why should God choose a murderer? So I like it when, just to reinforce what you said, that in prayer, one of the things we might seek should be, "God, what are you, what is your mind about this?" How, how, how should I approach this? Because, I mean, eh, 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 in all apology, about eighty percent of our prayer, really, I wonder if God is, I mean, we just bother him, let me put it that way, because without knowing his will and his nature, most of the prayer he just cannot answer, because it is not in his nature. But because we don't even know God, we approach him, and like my sister said, I've been praying for all this and God is not answering. How can God, who cannot lie, answer a prayer of lies? So I think that going along as well, eh, maybe along the line, we will bring it across the nature of God, for us all to learn, it will reinforce where we stand as believers, and, I mean, when I came to UK and why I saw some people pray, I told they are not believers. Because, you know, the way they approach God, as if God is their friend, and so casual. But I was told that if you don't come and pray and swear, God will not hear you. It's all in that arena, so it's very good, this tragedy that we're going on, and I hope that along the line, we will deal with this aspect of who really God is, his nature. Look at even the way Jesus prayed. He called Godfather, and the Pharisees just could not bear it, because they never knew God as a father. And unfortunately, it's reflecting in the way we've been taught and brought up as believers. But I hope as we keep going on this journey, we all come to the place where we will not only be effective in prayer, but we will know God as he really is. Thank you so much for all you're doing. And God bless you all.
Thank you. God bless you too. Okay, let's take one last contribution and close. Um, Sue, do you want to go next?
Good evening, everyone. And today I'm going home with just one thing. I mean, there's so many things that I've, I've learned, but I am going to be alert so I can partner God. Amen.
Amen, amen. Okay, since this is a short one, maybe, eh, Sister Shine, do you want to, um, share something? And welcome again, eh, on board our platform. I think you joined the other day, but I wasn't able to, um, get to speak to you.
Thank you very much, Daddy.
You're welcome.
Um, I've also heard and learned a lot. I think, um, as we begin, or as we have gone along with the Holy Spirit, we need to be sensitive to the spirit of discernment, whereby, when we pray about things, we know when and how to accumulate. Um, the spirit of God is so gentle and so beautiful. The first time I have something closer to that, or I saw something closer to that, I was just trying to the church about how beautiful the Holy Spirit was, how beautiful God is. Just look at the way birds fly and even how they work around things. It's, you cannot, I don't know how to classify those things, but I just want to say that it's so beautiful, that it's wonderful and beautiful, so you don't have to do many of shouting. Whenever I hear somebody shouting about prayer, I tell that, eh, you can easily tell that that person is a beginner. But, eh, as we are praying, let's also pray for others that are also yet to learn and yet to know more, so that we can all be good and also have, um, very sensitive, eh, image towards God and how sensitive he is towards us too. Because if he is not, he will not save us. If he is not, he will let us fall into those dungeons that we were in and then remain there. We, I had a revelation about a Christian sister days ago whereby he, she is in a problem with a marital issue. Um, I know nothing about her, and then when things were revealed to me, I keep seeing her, and I kept feeling that I am in the same problem that she is in. I came to a point where I contacted her, we spoke about the issue, and lo and behold, she didn't have anybody to talk to. And, eh, I found that, I found out that she had a consolation in whatever we discussed. So everything that we are learning here are almost practical things that are going to help us to nurture our Christian life. Let's keep praying for each other and keep praying for those that are yet to know God and widows that have known him. We pray that he let us know him more. Thank you so much for this platform. Thank you so much for receiving me here too. God bless you and everyone else. Amen.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for joining us, and thank you for your contribution. And, eh, yes, for being courageous. Many people, when they join us, I think it takes them a while to, to be able to talk. So thank you for, you know, eh, being, being forthright and, and, and sharing your experience. And thank you for that. Good. So, eh, Manuela is also here. I don't know whether Manuela wants to talk, um, but, um, yes, if you want to, please unmute yourself, otherwise you can type something in the chat. Um, and, um, yeah. Okay, so I think we're going to round up and, um, eh, pray that, you know, the Lord blesses you, blesses the rest of your week, that, you know, we all have a wonderful week, eh, rest of the week, weekend, and that we'll meet again, eh, next week. God bless you all.